I adjourn and I would like to call to order our regularly scheduled meeting, which was...
...................................................... Thank you.
Dr. Aguilar, do you have any opening comments?
Yes, sir. I'd like to extend my thanks to the district level staff and school staff for their dedication and academic focus last year that resulted in positive academic gains in LEAP and of course scores as well as gains in ACT, Graduation Index, and AP Test improvements. Recently, we celebrated our LEAP results with many of our elementary and middle school principals. Overall, Lafayette Parish students showed steady improvement in ELA, math, and science. Forty-three percent of Lafayette Parish students scored at the advanced or mastery level, which puts the district in the eighty-second percentile rank among Louisiana districts and five points higher than the state average. Since 2002, the district has risen from a rank of fourteenth to eleventh in the state. The state considers students proficient who score basic, mastery, or advanced on third through eighth grade LEAP test. With regard to proficiency, math performance improved across the district in ELA grades three, five, six, and eight, and science performance improved for grades three, four, five, and eight. Compared to the state, Lafayette Parish saw greater overall gains from 2015 to 2016. Lafayette outperformed the state in math in all grades. ELA results showed higher proficiency rates in grades three, four, five, six, and seven and equal to the state in grade eight. Science achievement exceeded the state results in grades three, four, five, seven, and eight. In regards to our three emerging elementary schools that are receiving additional support and resources, they also posted positive gains. Carren Crow Heights Elementary had an overall proficiency rate in all three subjects of fifty-one percent compared to forty-eight percent in 2015. Alice Boucher Elementary School showed an eight percent overall growth and an increased rate of proficiency in math by fifteen point nine percent. JW Falk Elementary School had thirteen percent growth overall with significant growth in ELA at nine point one percent in proficiency when compared to their 2015 data. JW Falk also grew eighteen point four percent in science, more than any other Lafayette Parish school. With regards to AP testing this year, Lafayette Parish administered this past year 1,083 Advanced Placement tests. Passing scores were earned on 470 of those tests, giving Lafayette Parish a forty-three point four percent passing rate, which is nearly ten percent higher than the average passing rate statewide of thirty-three point six percent. Furthermore, Lafayette Parish ranked seventh among districts in the state according to the number of passing exams in 2016. Lafayette Parish has also managed to significantly increase the number of passing exams from 194 in 2013 to 470 in 2016, making it the fifth fastest-growing parish in the state for passing exam scores. Special recognition goes out to Lafayette High School for being ranked third in the state for the rate at which it is increasing the number of passing exams. The passing rate at Lafayette High stands at fifty-seven percent, a full twenty-three percent higher than the state average. Again, congratulations to the entire academic and administrative teams across all divisions for aligning the curriculum, instruction, and assessments within our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Aguilar, and as one popular talk show host would say, ditto's to all of our employees and all of us who work for our school system. I think truly we are, in fact, a diamond in the rough. When you read about one person wants to fire Superintendent White and one person wants to do this, and I think Lafayette is really, you know, really showing that we are, in fact, much better than most of the rest of the state. At this time, I would recognize Ms...I'm sorry, Ms. Samick. It's that peripheral vision, Ms. Samick, concerning the National Leader in Me speech winner, Ms. Samick?
Yes, sir. Thank you and good evening, everyone. Type in the name Zoriel Tapo in the Internet search and a declaration of a leadership pops up. And then two more sites will pop up. Plantation Elementary First Grader Wins. And I think that's not bad for a soon-to-be second grader to have that national recognition. So why the recognition? Zoriel is the national winner of the Leader in Me Speech Contest. This is the first time the contest was conducted. Zoriel received a $500 grand prize and is featured on the Leader in Me YouTube channel and blog. Zoriel is set to be a second grader at Plantation Elementary School under the direction of Principal Anne Herman. Her parents are Leah, Carl and Leah Tapo, and they're with us tonight. Before I invite Zoriel to come up to the microphone to address you, I'd like you to see her speech.
A leader. That's what I start to be. Be proactive. I'll take care of it. I got it. And you didn't even have to ask me. A leader puts first things first. Sure, I'd like to stay outside and play, but I've got homework to finish. So volleyball, hopscotch, jump rope, riding my bike and scooter, it'll just have to wait. It takes a strong person to be a leader. Not in the body, but strong in the mind. Because once things start sour, there is no undo button. You can't pressure Ryan. A leader has to make the first decision the first time. It only takes a second to get in trouble, but a lifetime to repair. So I'll try to be that leader that will help you see clear. Matter of fact, right now, I'll be clear. I'm a leader. I don't think it, I know it. Realize. A leader doesn't have to be a not the king, Rosa Parks, the president, or the pope. A leader can be a principal, janitor, bus driver, a student, or just someone who gives others hope. Some leaders stand in front with their following behind. I choose to stand hand in hand with other leaders side by side. And together we say, stop the bullying, stop the teasing, stop the fighting. There are peaceful ways problems can be handled, other than posting violent and hurtful messages on Instagram, Facebook, and the YouTube channel. We can talk about our problems. You see, one day I plan to lead a nation. But for the time being, I'll start with just little old me, right here at Plantation.
Ladies and gentlemen, Zoriel Tapo.
I know what it's like not to grow up with parents. I know what it's like not to feel loved or seem like the whole world is against you.
I want to thank everybody in the board meeting for recognizing me and thank you for Ms. Herman.
Ms. Anne, would you join, Ms. Herman, would you join Ms. Tapo, please? We do have a gift certi...I'm sorry, a plaque certificate of appreciation to give to you as well as a book bag filled with supplies for your first day. So, Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Angel.
You up for getting, Ms. Samick?
Yes, sir. I would also like to do a certificate of appreciation to Corporal Ryan Richard. Corporal Richard began employment with the Lafayette Police Department in March of 2004. He has served on the Action Unit attacking crime through involvement in our neighborhoods, a member of the Lafayette Police Department SWAT team, training coordinator for new recruits and continuing certifications, provides safety assessments for structures in our community, and provides information to civilians to inform them on ways to prevent becoming a victim. His initiatives continue to connect the law enforcement and our community. Earlier this year, my secretary, Diane Burrell, attended a meeting and had the opportunity to hear Corporal Richard speak about workplace safety. He made quite an impression upon her, and she came back and made a request that he would be allowed to present the information here to the staff at Lafayette Parish School System. That did occur in July, and it was valuable information. So we greatly appreciate what you did. You're contributing your time as, just for actually goodwill, and tonight we would like to present him with a certificate of appreciation for his passion and commitment to safety in the workplace. So thank you, Corporal Ryan Richard.
I recognize Ms. Morris.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes listed in Section Three and accept the reports listed under Section Four of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we approve the Section Three and Section Four of the items in the agenda. We have a second. Mr. Santini seconded the motion. Any questions or comments from any members of the public, from members of the audience, from members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Eight for, none against.
Okay, motion carries. Information reports, Section Five, Southside High School mascot. Mr. Craig, Ms. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present to you the colors and the mascot for Southside High School. So I'd like to explain kind of the process that took place up until this point. Whenever I accepted the position as Southside High School principal, I then called Youngsville Middle School, Broussard Middle School, Milton Middle School, and Como High School, and I got together a committee. The middle schools gave me some names of people to be on the committee, and then Como gave me some names from their arts academy as well as just general student body. So with those students, I contacted those students, and then those students met with me on July 20th, and I presented to them various color combinations as well as various mascot, potential mascots. In my presentation that I gave to them, I gave them different visuals just so they could actually see with their eyes some potential colors and mascot choices. And with those potential colors, I also included possible uniform choices for them so they could see what they could possibly wear. And with those three mascot choices, they were the Southside Sharks, the Southside Hurricane, the Southside Swarm, i.e. a Yellow Jacket or a Hornet. Southside, the colors from the LPSS crest, the four colors from the crest, one of those colors was suggested to come from that crest, and the crest has orange, red, teal, and jade green. And of those four colors, only two of those colors in the crest have not been utilized by a high school in the parish, and that was orange and teal. So with those color combinations, I then allowed the students to select from three color combinations, and the three color combinations were teal, black, and gold. If any of you are familiar with Jacksonville Jaguars, that's kind of the, some of the color combinations I presented to the kids. The second color combination was teal navy and silver, such as Seattle Mariners. And the third color combination was orange and blue, such as Denver Broncos or, sorry, SEC fans, but University of Florida or Auburn. So those are the color combinations, gave them lots of visuals, presented to them, you know, lots of different ideas where they could see themselves actually being in those colors or having that mascot. Whenever they went to vote, the students then voted, and eighty-five point seven percent of the students that went to the form that voted on the Google form, they selected teal navy and silver as the school colors, and ninety-five point two percent of the students selected the Southside Sharks. So the school mascot is a Southside Sharks with teal navy and silver as our school colors. Do questions or anything?
When y'all are getting ready to score a touchdown or maybe fourth...
Jaws, jaws.
Y'all gonna, that's what I was, you're gonna do the jaw?
Absolutely.
Do, 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 okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, that's what I...
Former coach here, so I've already played all of that out in my mind. Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Speaking of Mr. Lachale, Ms. Cassidy, I'm glad y'all didn't choose Forest Green.
No, I couldn't have done that to Acadian High. And just for the record, whenever I was going through the mascots and looking at the number mascot, there are eight Rams in the state Louisiana. There's countless numbers of Bears and countless numbers of Lions. There's actually like four Vikings, like five Spartans, and there was only one Shark in the state Louisiana, and it's called, it's an academy school in Baton Rouge, and they play very limited sports. So we will only be the second Shark in the state Louisiana.
Thank you very much. Ms. Samick seems like you'll have the floor again for advanced accreditation?
Yes, sir, thank you. During the 2015-16 school year, our district was involved in renewing our advanced ed accreditation. This involved all of our schools and our district-level staff to review practices and procedures to ensure alignment. In February, a seven-member external team reviewed our documentation, visited several of our schools, and they made a recommendation for continued accreditation. Tonight, I would like to present to Superintendent Dr. Donald Aguilar and Board President Tommy Angel the following plaque which states, "This is to certify that Louisiana," I'm sorry, "Lafayette Parish School System has met the criteria for educational quality established by the Advanced Ed Accreditation Commission and is hereby presented this certificate of accreditation by the NCA Commission on Accreditation and School Improvement, the Northwest Accreditation Commission, and the SACS Commission on Accreditation School Improvement, valid through June 30th, 2021."
Next item on our agenda under information reports is high school soccer. Mr. Craig or Dr. Aguilar, you welcome to... I want to thank you for your patience, Mr. Mouton. I know how we, you know, how we work things, introductions, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. I'm well informed on how government works on many levels. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Baddow. They have been very patient in a lot of the questions that I've had regarding high school soccer. I had a very spirited conversation with Mr. Lachale over there, who's a diehard Wreckin' Ram, where both of my children are 10 and also have a 28-year-old that graduated from there as well. My issue with, and the thing that I wanted to bring up was, and with me and Mr. Lachale discussed, was more of planting a seed today. I understand there's a lot of financial issues, not only on the school board level, but Lafayette Consolidated Government for different and many reasons, but what I foresee in soccer is, I'm looking at a 10-year projection, and that's what I want y'all to start looking at. Soccer right now is a very expensive sport for a public high school, as far as I see it. We currently charge our parents $350 initial fee for their kids to play, and then there's $180 mandatory fundraiser, which means that we will get $180 back. No product comes back. And so that's part of their fees as well, bringing it up to about $530. In the four years that both my kids will play soccer at Acadian, I will spend in excess of $4,000. And I just think there has to be a better way to make it cheaper for more kids to play. It's probably, from looking at Lafayette Consolidated Government's website, the most-played recreational sport right now in Lafayette Parish. You go to any park where there's soccer fields, and you're gonna see they're full of parents and kids, and those kids are coming up. Now, what is my vision and my reason to want to come talk to y'all today? Well, my reason is I want to make it cheaper for kids to play soccer, and the only way that we can do that is if we entice teachers that have played the sport, and they're starting to get into the teaching aspect of it now. They've gone away, they played at the collegiate level, they're coming back. At Acadian, we're fortunate this year where we will have a head coach that will actually be a school board staff, a teacher, and she's played on the collegiate level. She afforded, with her ability, to play on that college level because of soccer. And so it's become a vessel, especially for females that play soccer, and I have a daughter and a son. And so it's actually become a positive spin, but in order to lessen those amounts, you know, the cost of running those programs is very expensive. I'm currently the president of the Acadian High Girls Soccer Program, and I know Mr. Lachale was the president of the boys at one time, and he understands the cost. It costs about $22,000 to run that program, which is paid for 100% by the parents. And I get it. There's a reason why it's like that is because of the lack of talented coaches that we have in the system. But what I'm asking you today and going forward the next couple of years is to hopefully put in place soccer as a major sport to hopefully entice teachers to want to be coaches. That is our biggest expense. That takes up about 40% of our expense for a head coach and a assistant coach to fund in order for the soccer programs to work. And so I think a lot of kids are missing out as a result of the status that soccer is a minor sport. Now, understanding, I know in the beginning soccer was a minor sport, but I think that day has come and passed. I think it should be labeled as a major sport. All the sports that are in high school today started out as sports in high school. There was no select system, but today there's a select sport for every sport in high school today. Soccer worked backwards. Soccer started as a select sport and has grown into a phenomenal sport today. I didn't have soccer growing up. I grew up in Acadian Parish, and we probably still don't have soccer. But in Lafayette Parish, it's a big deal. And I see it in my kids, I see the kids on the field, I see how much they get out of it, the discipline of going to practice on a regular basis, and it's, it just, I think we just need to start thinking ahead and trying to entice these teachers into seeking careers as soccer coaches as they come back into the system. And do I think a whole bunch of teachers are gonna go out and run out and become soccer coaches? Absolutely not. I'm looking 10 years down the road, I'm looking 10 years from now, that if we have soccer as a major sport, that it will hopefully entice our younger teachers to become coaches and hopefully lessen the cost to the parents that are trying to get their kids to play. Because right now, I can assure you, we're failing some kids that want to play because it's a, either you pay or you don't play type of sport, period. That's, you know, that's the reality. That's the reality of how y'all control the budget here at the school board, you know? So as parents and as a president of our association, it's tough for me to have to go to these parents to make sure that those payments are made. So I would ask, and again, I thank Dr. Aguilar for giving me these few moments, I don't want to take up any more of y'all's time, that in the future, next year, the year after, because I'm gonna continue to pay visits to y'all, that we look, we look what soccer is today. It's a major sport. It's a major sport in this parish. The high schools that participate, they constantly in the playoffs. Acadian High was recognized before this board, boys soccer, for coming out second in state. The girls' team went to the third round. Como made it to the playoff. Lafayette made it to the playoff. So we're having great success, and especially on the girls' side, they're even having success in going to the next level and playing on the collegiate level. So, you know, with that being said, I would ask that in the future, that y'all seek soccer as a major sport for the purpose of lowering the cost for the parents and making it more accessible to more players, because I know there's more players out there that want to play, that can play, and that would play. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mouton. If I'm not mistaken, I think Carren Crow several years ago won the tournament, the state tournament in soccer. They won the state title several years ago. And I want to also tell you and those, the rest of us here, that Mr. Baddow and I spent a week together in Canada, in New Brunswick, Canada, many years ago when both of us looked different, namely, we had hair. But, and it was, I was amazed, I mean, I didn't realize how big soccer was, I guess, worldwide. I didn't realize it, but it's, from what I understand, it is the most popular sport in the whole world. More people watch soccer matches than NFL football or baseball or anything else. So it is, I mean, it is a big deal, as you say, Mr. Mouton. And I can assure you that, at least as far as I'm concerned, that your comments did not fall on deaf ears. I will do everything I can to try to promote that. I think it's a great, it's a great sport, and I appreciate your interest in it. Thank you, you're welcome anytime, by the way. Moving along to item 5.4, which is personnel changes for August, Ms. Tippett.
That we're real excited about these new administrators. I'll start with Amy Delott. She's the, will be the assistant principal at Lafayette High School. Ms. Delott earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Nichols State University. She earned a Master's of Education degree from American College of Education. Ms. Delott was a classroom English teacher for 15 years. She has also served as an instructional strategist for Lafayette High School. Ms. Delott is a National Board Certified Teacher. She has earned many awards, including the Best Buy Teacher Award for Technology Implementation, the Veterans of Foreign Wars State Runner-Up Teacher of the Year Award, the Veterans Foreign Wars Post 422 Teacher of the Year Award, and Iberia Parish Teacher of the Year. She was appointed by Superintendent John White to serve on the Board of Directors for the Louisiana School for Math, Science, and Arts. Congratulations, Ms. Delott, on your promotion to Assistant Principal at Lafayette High School.
Thank you. Good evening, President Angel, board members, Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Craig, Ms. Samick, Mr. Abear. I know we have quite a few introductions tonight, so I'm gonna keep it really brief. Thank you for this opportunity to serve as Assistant Principal of Lafayette High School. I'm excited about this upcoming year and the opportunity to work with our families and our students and our faculty as we continue the tradition of striving towards excellence at LHS. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Santini?
Ms. Delott, I wanted to congratulate you on your new position, and also just as you lobby me to make sure that I look out for the interests of Lafayette High School, I want to make sure you look out for the interests of my high school up there in Natchitoches as well, okay? All right.
Next, we have Ginger Richard, Assistant Principal GT Linden Elementary School. Ms. Richard earned a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from UL Lafayette. She earned a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from UL Lafayette. She earned a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from UL Lafayette. She has served as an English teacher at Ridge Elementary School and Milton Elementary School. She has served as an elementary math lead teacher for the district, and most recently as an instructional strategist for Milton Elementary School. She has been awarded Teacher of the Year at Ridge Elementary School. Congratulations on your promotion to Assistant Principal at GT Linden.
Dr. Aguilar, members of the board, I'm very honored to have been appointed as the Assistant Principal of Green Tea Linden. I would first like to thank my family and the many mentors that I see out there that have helped me along the way. I am very excited to work alongside Ms. Cherie Fontenot in bringing continued success to Green Tea Linden. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Next is Jada Singleton, Assistant Principal Plantation Elementary School. Ms. Singleton earned a Bachelor of Science degree from UL Lafayette and a Master's of Education degree from Southern University. She also has earned a Specialist Degree from Northwestern University. She served as a teacher at Westside Elementary, Ernest Galette Elementary, and her most recent position was Lafayette Parish District Math Coach. She has been recognized as a LAE Teacher of the Year and has served on the State Louisiana Curriculum Standard Review Committee. Congratulations on your appointment, Ms. Singleton.
Good evening. I'm very eager to start this new adventure in my career. I would like to thank Dr. Aguilar, Ms. Samick, Mr. Craig, Ms. Aloisio, Mr. Abear, for being great leaders in Lafayette Parish. Thank you, school board members, for all that you do. I would like to thank the math coaches for instilling in me lifelong work ethics, and I would like to thank Ms. Herman for giving me this opportunity to have this position at such a great school. I'm looking forward into growing with you and learning from you, and I just want to thank you again. Our very first year of school, we got a visit from the superintendent, so can't get much better than that. So, thank you.
Next is Venus Swallow, Assistant Principal at Paulborough Middle School. Ms. Swallow earned a Bachelor of Science degree from UL Lafayette. She earned a Master's of Education degree in Educational Leadership from the American College of Education. Ms. Swallow served as an English teacher at Paulborough Middle School. She has served as a data analyst, academic behavior interventionist, and Assistant Principal at Acadian Middle School, and her most recent position has been instructional strategist at Scott Middle School. Ms. Swallow was recognized as the 2012 Lafayette Parish Middle School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Swallow.
Good evening, Dr. Aguilar, Ms. Samick, Mr. Abear, members of the board. I would just like to say that I'm truly honored to be given this privilege to lead alongside Stephen Judice at Paulborough Middle. There's no doubt in my mind that this is going to be a fantastic school year for the students, the staff, faculty, and all the parents involved at Paulborough Middle. Thank you for the opportunity.
Next, we have Peggy Stephan, and she will be the Assistant Principal at Como High School and Acadiana High School. She'll be itinerant between those two high schools. Peggy Stephan earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from UL Lafayette and a Master's of Education degree from UL Lafayette. Ms. Stephan has served as a teacher at Acadiana High School and, most recently, data analyst at Acadiana High School. She has been recognized as Acadiana High School Teacher of the Year and LATM Outstanding Math Teacher, and Lafayette Education Foundation Teacher of the Year finalist for two years.
Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, Mr. Craig, Ms. Samick, President Angell, board members, Mr. Abear, and Ms. Aloisio. I would like to take this moment to say thank you for the opportunity to be the itinerant Assistant Principal at both Acadiana and Como High Schools. It's an exciting time for all of us in Lafayette Parish, making sure that we are meeting the needs of our students. Having been an employee of Lafayette Parish for many years, I believe that we are moving in the right direction, and I'm excited to know that I'm going to be part of this trend. There are many people that have helped guide me in my journey, and I'm grateful for each of them. But tonight, I would also like to say thank you to Mr. David Lejeune and Ms. Mary Zino for giving me this opportunity. Additionally, I am blessed to have the love and support of my family, and I would like to recognize two of them who are in the audience, who are both educators also in Lafayette Parish. My husband, Paul Stephan, a teacher at Westside Elementary, and my daughter, Ms. Katie Stephan, a teacher at Prairie Elementary. It's truly a family business. Please know that the well-being of our students at both schools will always be a top priority for me. Again, thank you for this opportunity, and have a great evening.
Next, I'd like to introduce Lori Venable, Assistant Principal between Austin Elementary and Burke Elementary School. Ms. Venable earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from UL Lafayette. She earned a Master's of Education degree from UL Lafayette. Also, Ms. Venable has served as an elementary teacher at Austin Elementary and Alice Boucher Elementary School. Her most recent assignment was the data analyst at Austin Elementary School. Ms. Venable has been an LEF Grants recipient and an ACA Arts Grant recipient. Also, she was an LEF Teacher Award nominee and the 2013 Austin Elementary Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Venable, on your promotion.
Dr. Aguilar, members of the board and central office personnel, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be the Assistant Principal at Burke and at Austin. I'm looking, I'm looking forward to an exciting year and to work at two great schools.
Next, we have Kim Ata, who is the principal of Milton Elementary Middle School. Ms. Ata earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from UL Lafayette and a Master's of Education degree from McNeese State University. Ms. Ata has 18 years of experience in education, seven years as a classroom teacher, and four as a district curriculum interventionist facilitator, and seven years as an Assistant Principal in Vermillion Parish. In addition to her service, Ms. Ata is a National Board Certified Teacher and a recipient of the NECC Light's Grant and the Vermillion Parish Technology Integration Grant. She has been awarded Louisiana Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year, Eaton Park Elementary Teacher of the Year, and the Sally Mae First Class Teacher Award from the American Association of School Administrators. Congratulations, Ms. Ata.
Good evening, Dr. Aguilar, the board, central office staff. I am very honored to join the Lafayette Parish family. 18 years of my career has been spent in Vermillion Parish, and I bring a wealth of experience to my new position at Milton. Upon being hired only three weeks ago, we have accomplished such a tremendous task of getting our school ready for students who report tomorrow morning. That would not have been possible without the help of individuals like Mr. Abear and Ms. Aloisio, along with my other administrators. I was welcomed by our staff just the day before yesterday, Tuesday, I'm lost in my week, with a hard hat that has my name monogrammed on it with bedazzled, sparkly little rhinestones in preparation for the expansion and renovation that is about to take place at Milton. We are extremely excited to be a part of this new adventure, and I'm all decked out and ready to go with my new hard hat. I said I can't wait to shake the hands of the architect as he greets me with my fancy hard hat. So we look forward to working with you and continuing working with your district personnel. So, thank you.
Next, we have Sanji Fontenot, Principal of Judice Middle School. Ms. Fontenot earned a Bachelor of Science degree from Louisiana State University and completed the teacher education program at UL Lafayette. She completed a Master's of Education degree from American College of Education.
Mr. President, board members, not only am I honored, but I am so excited about being the new principal at Judice Middle. I have met my staff, I've met half of the families that came through for orientation, and I, it's amazing, these people have just opened their arms and welcomed me. So I look so forward to moving Judice Middle up. So look out, we are coming. We're coming after those A-schools up there, we're going to be knocking y'all out. I too had several great mentors that I need to mention, because one is in the audience, and that is Mr. Bado. You know, I was under him when I was at Edgar Martin as the librarian, and he taught me a lot. And then also, Ms. Jeanie Abear, when she, when I was there as the assistant principal and she was the principal. So I'd like to thank them, as well as my wonderful husband and my beautiful son, who have allowed me to accept this position. So I look forward to it, and thank you.
Next, we have Mary Qualley, Principal of Carron Crow High School. Ms. Qualley earned a Bachelor of Science and a Master's of Arts degree from UL Lafayette. She earned an administrative license from the Gardner Webb University and became certified as a journalism educator from the Journalism Education Association. Ms. Qualley has served as North Forsite High School in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, as their Curriculum and Testing Coordinator. Prior to that position, she was the Title I Coordinator for the School of Biotechnology at the Simon G. Atkins Academic and Technology High School. She has also taught middle and high school English, as well as newspaper, yearbook, student council, and color guard. Ms. Qualley's administrative experiences include serving as Assistant Principal and Acting Principal at Carron Crow High School. Ms. Qualley was selected to be the recipient of the Joseph B. Whitehead Educator of Distinction Award. This award was associated with a $50,000 Coca-Cola scholarship. Ms. Qualley, congratulations on your promotion to Principal at Carron Crow High School.
I'd like to thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm going to thank you in advance for your help to continue to grow our school. I'm honored to work with such a great staff, community, students, and family at Carron Crow High School. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tippett. Yes, sir, Mr. Lachale.
If I could, Ms. Stephan, well-deserved. Glad you're staying home half the time. And Ms. Fontenot, welcome to Judice Middle.
Yes, sir. Dr. Chassault.
On Personnel tonight, there's a number of service retirements, and I'd just like to thank everyone in the system for all of their quality years of giving back to our kids. And I noticed one name on here for a lady that I've interacted with so many times, and that's Ms. Dolores. That's Mr. Craig's Administrative Assistant, and Ms. Dolores is living. I had to ask her, how long had she been here? And she said, 40 years. And I'm like, wow, that's a lot. She said, well, yeah, I started when I was 17. And I'm like, wow, that's, it's like, truly amazing. So, Ms. Dolores, I know you're at home. Congratulations, some well-deserved rests, and thank you for all the times I had to call and bother you and ask you a million questions. I appreciate you, Ms. Dolores.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the millage rate adoption and roll forward for the reassessment tax year 2016. Mr. Guidry, you going to give us some insight?
Yes. The Louisiana Constitution requires that property be reassessed, in Lafayette Parish, or across the state for that matter, be reassessed or reappraised every four years. 2016 is a reassessment year. So in preparing for that process, there will be two resolutions that will be presented to the board on September 7th. And resolutions are presented as action items. So because of that, we're presenting as information items to give time for public and board review. Prior to that meeting, we're presenting this information. Included in the information packet as attachments are the descriptions of each millage, the current rates, and what the millage revenues are to be used for, a sample of the press release that was distributed, a sample of the public advertisements that were required, and samples or drafts of the resolutions that will be presented to the board. There's two of them, as I mentioned. The first will be the adoption of the millage rates, and the second one will be where the board will consider whether or not to roll forward the millage rates. So basically, what happens is, in a reassessment year, when property tax values go up, the millage rates are adjusted downward so that it generates the same amount of revenues as the previous year. That's the first resolution, where those rates are adopted. Subsequent to that, the second resolution will be presented, and the board will consider whether or not to roll forward those rates to the existing rates, the rates that exist today, prior to the reassessment. And so, with that said, we have a timeline presented as an attachment, and we just ask that the board take a look at this information prior to the meeting on September 7th, which will be preceded by a public hearing, during which we'll ask for public comments. And the special board meeting, of course, will be another opportunity for public comments, and then we'll ask the board take action in this process, so that we can then move forward and provide the information to our tax assessor for submission to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. I'll read the following introduction items, and of course, will be brought back up at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item 6.1, Request for Approval of Grant Submission: Enhancing Instruction for Special Learners. 6.2, Request for Approval of Grant Submission: Project Louisiana Launch. 6.3, Establishing a Lafayette Parish School System Non-Traditional School for the '17-'18 School Year. 6.4, Recommendation: Medicaid Billing and Electronic Medical Records Services. 6.5, Approval of Revised Job Description: Food Service Maintenance Technician III. 6.6, Approval of Revised Job Description Title: Food Service Warehouse Coordinator. And 6.7, Dean of Students' Position at MP Moss Preparatory. This concludes the items on the introduction list. Do we have any motion to bring any of these items to action? If not, I'll move on to item 7 of our agenda, time-sensitive action items. I would ask that you indicate to me if you wish to pull any of these items. Item 7.1 is Adopt a Cop.
Pull that, please.
Item 7.2, Auto Insurance Liability Premium Assistance for Contract Bus Drivers. Item 7.3, Modified High School Attendance Zones for Under-Capacity Schools, Beginning with the '16-'17 School Year.
Can you pull that?
7.4, Approval of Seal Quote for Prairie Elementary Structural Repairs. Item 7.5, Approval of All-Time Sensitive Action Items, with the exception of those pulled. I think we have but one that was not pulled.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 7.4.
A motion seconded by Mr. Lachale, that we approve Seal Quote for Prairie Elementary School Structural Repairs. Any questions or comments from members of the audience? Any members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote on that item.
8-4, 8-4, none against.
Motion carries, and we'll move on then to item 7.1, which is Adopt a Cop. Mr. Centini.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves the Adopt a Cop program in our elementary schools in the city of Lafayette.
I'll second.
Ms. Morrison seconds the motion that we, in fact, adopt the program. Any questions or comments from members of the audience? Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Dr. Aguilar, members of the School Board. I am Nanette Cook. I'm a City Councilwoman, District 7, but tonight I am coming to speak to you as a teacher. I would like to introduce a program to you that we would like to present to the School Board, and it's called Adopt a Cop. It's a community-building program, as well as a recruitment opportunity for future officers. It is a program that connects elementary school students in Lafayette Parish with an officer in the Police Department, the Lafayette Police Department. The blueprint or the guideline for the program looks like this. There's a volunteer signup for teachers and officers, and volunteers, strictly volunteer. We are encouraging everyone to participate, and by the way, we've already pitched it to the police officers, and they loved it, so no pressure. But anyway, they, but it is a volunteer program, and the officer will be adopted by a teacher and a class. There'll be conversations between the teacher and the officer to determine scheduling opportunities for the officer to visit the class, maybe lunch with the kids, talk about safety, and just give them a little sample of their daily activities. Students will correspond with the officers through letters, cards, notes, and all of these actually can be incorporated in a lesson plan in the form of a handwriting, grammar opportunity, or art class where they can make their notes, so we can somehow incorporate that into their lesson. Personal information can be shared if desired by the officer, like birthday, favorite things, favorite foods, favorite color, anything that would possibly help the student get a better idea of who this officer is and have some connection with that person. An officer can engage as much as he wants and as much as his schedule allows with the students, but hopefully, they'll be able to realize that the officer is like them in many ways, but in one different way, how brave he is every day in risking his life for their safety. This officer deserves respect, and this program will hopefully create an attitude of respect and appreciation of what the officers face every day. Teachers can engage as much and also as little as their schedule allows, and hopefully, there will be an opportunity to incorporate a lesson plan again with these officers. Some of our kids are in need of a positive role model in their lives, and hopefully, the police officer can be that person for them. So we are, you know, hoping we get some support as far as from the teachers in Lafayette Parish, and just really, an opportunity for education to create a positive attitude between police officers and the community. And we figured a great place to start is with the elementary school students. There's already an officer in the middle school, so the elementary schools seem like a great opportunity, again, to start that positive relationship and hopefully build it. You know, given what's going on in the communities and around the country, we're hoping that here in Lafayette, we can create a really positive attitude and help them to, you know, and they respect them already, I'm sure, but again, a little bit, you know, create a little more of an opportunity for respect, and hopefully, bring that home and, you know, spread that word to their parents, and again, get that community support going a little bit more. So that's kind of the program in a nutshell. If you, you know, Justin is gonna give you maybe a few more words on it, but I really appreciate the opportunity to help work with him and to have him help me with the program. And again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to come and pitch it to you as well.
Good evening. I'm sure you noticed that we are starting off the program in the city of Lafayette, and mainly this is because Councilwoman Cook, who has jurisdiction, the parish council has jurisdiction over the Lafayette Police Department, but this is a program that can be expanded parish-wide. And so what we're tending to do is we're tending, going to try to match police officers with classrooms that are in the precinct where they serve. So if you police the community around Alice Boucher, and hopefully, we'll get you in a classroom at Alice Boucher, so you see the students in the community that you're policing in a different setting than the actual execution of their duty. So I would hope that the city of Scott would be interested with Ms. Morrison and Ms. Lachely. I would hope the city of Youngsville, the city of Carron Crowe would be interested. And this is something from our end that would be very easily, easy to expand, and it would be just up to the desires of the municipalities to participate. Now, when Councilwoman Cook brought this to my attention, it gave me a powerful example of what our schools can be, the role that we can play beyond the basics of education, and helping the children build those critical relationships with the members of the community, the brave members of the community, that will guide them as they become older and become our community of the future. So I hope everyone can support this, and I'm really proud to present this program to you guys. Thank you.
Mr. Centini, I'd like to ask anybody in the audience that's maybe old enough, that grew up in Lafayette Parish, does anybody remember Officer Friendly? Officer Friendly, if I'm not mistaken, his daddy was Mr. Loop, who owned a grocery store off a university near Eric Street, where my daddy grew up when he was younger. And it was his son that would come to school. He was a Lafayette Parish, he was a Lafayette PD, if I'm not mistaken, and he'd come to school, and he'd visit with you and talk with you. And for me to still remember that, it had to have made an impact when I was younger. So I applaud y'all on this program, and you're definitely gonna have my support.
Thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Chief Thomas played a big role in getting on board with this and pitching it to his officers. And Mr. Kanesek, whose dad is a retired sergeant with the Lafayette Police Department, he also participated in the meetings where we were hashing this out. So I wanted to make sure we recognize those individuals.
Yes, sir, Dr. Chasson.
I have a friend now, Officer Rose, who actually does this for Nardside and my elementary school. And when I say an amazing idea, an amazing idea, because you'd be surprised how well these kids respond to someone that they know that they're familiar with. And he lives all three blocks, three blocks from JW Falk. So I'm sure that's an easy task to take care of. Officers would be probably bursting at the scene just to make it into our schools to be a part of our kids' lives.
Any other questions or comments from members of the Board or the public? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Eight, four, none against.
Motion carries. I want to thank you, Ms. Cook, very much, and I want to just say that I think District 7 is very fortunate to have two very competent people representing them, Ms. Morris on the School Board and you on the Consolidated Government. Pleasure, ma'am. The next item is Auto Insurance Liability Premium Assistance, item 7.2. Mr. Lachely.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move for an invoice and a compensation paid to school bus owner-operators in an amount of $3,000 for the 201617 school year, and that each owner-operator executed contract agreement to be prepared by legal counsel.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second by Ms. Morrison concerning the bus drivers' compensation. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the audience? You want to comment? Oh, okay.
Just available for questions.
Yes, Ms. Morris.
Ms. Bernard, I just want to ensure that this is something that your department will look at each year as we're renewing insurance policies and premiums, because I think that if we get to a point where our SIR decreases, so that the contract drivers' coverage can decrease, we would have to revisit the supplemental payment. So just would like to have, you have to have it on your calendar to make sure we're keeping track as we go along through the years.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. At renewal of our policy, I'll reevaluate it every year.
Mr. Hidalgo.
Mr. Bernard, do we, I've heard some averages thrown out, but can you tell me what the feedback you've received from the contract drivers who are being impacted? What is the lowest amount of increase, and what is the highest amount of increase that you've heard?
The lowest would honestly be zero, because, for those who already carry it. But when you're looking at, on the low scale, about $500, and on the high scale, $10,000.
So some of them already carry it?
Yes.
So it'd be a zero increase to them, because they've made the conscious decision to carry it?
You could say they're already paying that addition.
Right, right. So we're gonna give them a $3,000 check?
Correct, as I understand it. Ms. Boudreaux may want to speak to the specifics of it if necessary, but that's what, that's what I understand in the motion.
And a $10,000 individual is based on many things, maybe driving record, maybe age, I don't know, maybe...
Age, parish you live in. It's higher in Lafayette Parish than in Acadia, for example. We have a couple of drivers who live in neighboring parishes, and it's very obvious they're charged less.
And that same person would get a $3,000 check?
Yes.
And so we used probably the lowest at 500 and the highest at 10,000 to average amount?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruce Hord, I think you had it.
That was a question I wanted to ask, what was the ceiling, what was the floor? And the question in my mind, and I've been, some of the bus drivers have been asking me, and I've been mentioning, are we looking at making them whole? By that, I mean if we're asking them to, for another additional $500,000 of coverage, and it costs them more than the $3,000 we're offering them, then we're not making them whole.
We're really not allowed to reimburse them for that particular expense, so Danielle.
Ms. Boudreaux, you want to comment?
I think that his question is probably more directed to the Board than Mona.
Ms. Morris?
Well, and I think we discussed this previously, but of course, the School Board's under no obligation at all to give any supplement to the contract drivers. We've already voted to require a million dollars of coverage, so we're under no obligation to pay even $1 as a supplement. So I don't think that making them whole, as you're using the term, is a feasible or reasonable suggestion. And I do think that the suggestion that we supplement $3,000 is quite generous.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hidalgo.
Well, maybe Ms. Danielle, Ms. Boudreaux can, or you, Ms. Morris, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't even think that we can legally offset their premium, so we're basically finding a loophole to offset their premium. So we're doing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lachely.
Yes, this would be for Ms. Mona, just one of the questions I received from some of the bus drivers, is this will be paid how and when?
Mr. Guidry, have we decided how and when?
No, we hadn't had that discussion yet.
Mr. Bruce Hord.
It was mentioned that we look at this yearly. At some point, we have got to hold a conversation if we are going to continue paying that or put the drivers on notice that, but the contract drivers on notice that two, three years down the road, that we will possibly no longer be paying or giving, or whatever terms we want to use to supplement that. So even though we're not under no obligation to do that, I would like to see something more long-term than every 12 months, because it's, where we're at now, without giving them more, I think, 10, 15 years before, has been, so we give them anything more than what they're getting. And I understand we're asking them, or we could demand them, to go up a million-dollar coverage and nothing in return. So I'm just fearful of next year, with a budget cut, that we'll no longer be able to do that, and we'll lose 51 bus drivers and their bus, and their contract.
Can I get one more stat?
You want one more crack at it, Mr. Hidalgo?
I just want to say that I hear what you're saying, Mr. Bruce Hord. My concern is for the drivers, and I would imagine, we don't have the figures, we can't get, we obviously can't get the figures that we were looking for, but for the drivers who will have a humongous increase, this is nothing. I don't see how they'll sustain themselves with the amount that we've proposed, and then other drivers are basically gonna get all of it, a bonus, essentially, lack of a better term. So, you know, it's really unfair to the drivers who are having a larger increase. This little bit of nothing is really not gonna help them. So, you know, we want to stretch something out. You know, I would argue that there are more drivers who will have little to no impact than there are drivers who will have a humongous impact. They're there, but I mean, if you look at the gap, 500 versus 10,000, the estimated low and high, that makes for a nice average. That makes for, that makes for that $3,000 number, you know? What if, what if the lowest were 6,000? Excuse me, the highest were 6,000? What's the average now? And you're looking at a driver who, probably the majority of them will, again, have little impact versus the ones who have a major impact. It's just, I haven't found a fair way. I have put ideas out there, no bites, but so far, this is certainly not a fair way to do it.
Mr. Bruce Hord, one more crack at it.
Yes. I guess I read one of the suggestions that you had, and somewhere down the line, it may come to that. You know, it may be more financially feasible to do that. We're not holding a conversation back and forth, but I'm just concerned about, you know, I know some of them is going to get what they call a windfall, but I just, I just want to make them whole, you know, and we don't have to do that, under no obligation to do that, but to, for us to suggest that, or ask that, or demand of that, and not make them whole is concerning me.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Dr. Chasson.
I don't know if anybody can answer this question, but I was curious. When it comes down to the individual payouts, separate checks being issued out, do we know how many it's gonna be? As far as like how many bus drivers will receive the help R8?
My last count, Dr. Chasson, was 61, but I think a couple went over to the Board's side since then, so it's around 59 drivers. But we will know for sure. We're gonna get an exact count from H R.
Okay. I'll just use 60 as a wrong number. So with 60, Ms. Bernard, do we have individual quotes for all 60 of those drivers?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
We got 51 submissions.
Fifty, okay. Out of the, out of the 51, do you happen to know what the average was?
Yes, we did figure the average at around 26, 26 something, $2,600 and a little bit.
Okay. Out of the ones that were zero, we still figured those numbers into that equation?
No, no, these are just the people, the increases for folks.
The increases, okay. So the ones that are already zero, for the ones that already have the million-dollar policy, those folks already have it ahead of time, but they still inevitably came out of pocket for the million-dollar policy.
They did.
So I think we need to figure those numbers in there as well before, because I understand what we're doing, but I know I keep hearing like $500 and $10,000, but those end up being outliers, mathematics-wise, that end up getting thrown out, and I'm trying to get a firm average. And if we didn't equate the folks, if there's nine of us here, and...
I believe you're looking to, the term you're looking for is a weighted average.
There you go. That's what I need. I just want it to be fair. I can support whatever, I know I can look out in the audience, and if folks are saying, yeah, this is fair, but this is only a small sect of folks that it affects. That zero, if, if there's four of us here that have been having it for the past year because we just wanted it, but then we still need to equate those four into it, because next year, excuse me, those folks will be getting the check as well, or the extra help, but we didn't equate what they individually paid to get to the thousand four years ago, two years ago, or six months ago. I don't know if anybody, I know this is a, I don't know if this is a pressing matter, but I would like to make sure it is a correct average or a weighted average before I vote on it. That's just my thoughts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Centini.
I want to confirm two things. In the motion, it said 1617. So this, once this school year ends, we're gonna have to do this over again, right? So we'll have the opportunity to see how this works, to make sure, because my next question is going to be, what do we use? be, what do we use to calculate the number next year, when there is no increase over the current year's liability limits? Has anyone thought that through? Oh, it was number three? It was number two on my list.
Well, wait till we get to that bridge before we cross it.
Well, that was why I wanted to confirm that it was going to end at the end, after this school year. Okay.
Yeah, I think the motion is for 1617. Dr. Aguilar?
So just some contribution to the conversation, Mr. Kinesik had run a data analysis of the spreadsheet, and his analysis, and he's not here tonight, indicated that if you disregard the $10,000 premium, and you disregard the ones below $1,000, because those are artificially low, then his calculations were that the difference in the rate increase was closer to $1,530. That was his analysis.
Any other questions or comments concerning the motion? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
7-4, one abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Dr. Chassot, you want the floor?
There's, I'm glad it passed, but there's a, I'm just thinking from all of the quality trigonometry and calculus classes and everything I've ever taken in statistics in school, there's a better way to go about this, because if indeed he took those numbers and ran that analysis, I know it still doesn't, it still doesn't take into account all of the folks that have previously had it, that will still get the check. And Ms. Bernard, do you happen to know that random number of folks that already had? Three, okay. This indeed will be difficult next year, because small rate increases or decreases, or someone getting a multi-driver discount, or if someone gets in an accident and then subsequently, on their own personal time, this number can fluctuate tremendously. We need to really do some thorough research the next go-round, because this can obviously get out of hand. I just wanted to state that.
Ms. Angel?
Yes, sir. Dr. Aguilar?
So I wanted to be clear, so there's no misunderstanding, that we will need to have all of the drivers immediately sign the soon-to-be-developed bus use agreement that will have this clause in it. My understanding is that you required the bus drivers to have that million dollars' worth of liability insurance. So I've been advised, they need to have, they need to get the insurance. My thought is that they will have 15 working days to secure the million dollars' worth of liability insurance. If they do not have that insurance purchased, then we will not allow them to drive their bus, because we need to get everybody in compliance with that use agreement.
Do you know when the check will be, or when the reimbursement will be issued? Or should I be calling it reimbursement?
Dr. Chassot, we're going to discuss that tomorrow morning. We're going to figure out how soon we can issue those checks.
Okay. And if at all possible, if it is, if the check is, if this occurs soon, this transaction, transaction's okay? If there's any recourse, if someone just stops working for the system a month from now, two months from now, and they've already...
We'll have a mechanism in place. Normally, there are payments made, and there's a last check issued to employees who retire or resign. We'll make sure that we have a mechanism to collect money that had been issued.
Mr. Bruce Hutter?
He answered my question. I want to know when would this take place? If not, he answered the question. He said in 15 days would be required, mandatory in 15 days. My question was, would it be mandatory on tomorrow when school begins?
I think the answer is no. Is that correct, Dr. Aguilar?
15 days.
We're going to draft a letter tomorrow and make sure that it gets delivered to the bus drivers to inform them, one, number one, must have the million dollars' worth of liability insurance. They will need to sign the bus use agreement, and we will notify them of 15 days to secure the insurance.
Okay. Item 7.3 is modified high school attendance zones for under-capacity schools beginning with this 1617 year. Dr. Chassot, you want the floor on that one?
Yes, sir.
You want to make a motion?
Yes, sir. And Ms. Melv already has it. Motion to make mandatory any child living in any newly drawn, under-capacity high school zone, N H S and Carron Crowe, to be specific, for begin attending their home-zone school for 2016, 2017. And any child wishing to remain at their current high school may do so for one optional year, 2016, 2017, with the administrative rule coming into effect for 2017, 2018.
I'll second that motion.
And I'll give an explanation. Sorry for that long motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Angel stepped out just for a second. Do we have any comments or questions from the audience? Any comments or questions from the board?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'll try and make it quick. Nartside High School and Carron Crowe are two of our high schools that are under capacity. Nartside being tremendously under capacity, right under 700, 674, I believe, is the number right now. We've taken a look at the newly drawn high school zones from Mr. Hefner, and in looking at those zones, there's a number of people that live, for myself, that I can speak of personally, that live in the Paulborough area, the Macomb area, Visey area, the Crop area, just basically all of the area around here, Paulborough, Career Center, La Rosen, that have always been requesting to go to Como, because whenever those lines were changed a long time ago, all of those kids have to wake up really early in the morning to go to Como. Some of those kids wake up at 5:15, 5:20, 5:30, catching a bus at 5:50, and they're just on the bus all day. Those parents have always requested, ever since I walked the district, the entire district, the first time, to go to Nartside, since it's that much closer. It is tremendously that much closer to their home as compared to Como. Well, with the new lines being drawn, I wanted to at least, and I know the discussion was for 2017, 2018, but a lot of these parents have continuously told me, as soon as it goes into effect, my child's going to Nartside. They're going to Nartside. Well, my only concern with making this the day before school was that it's not fair to anyone. If you like to choose to go to school to Nartside or Carron Crowe, then that's, it's your decision. If you'd like to remain at your school, it's your decision. But my concern was for the eligibility of some kids when it came to sports. If you don't play any sports, then it doesn't affect you. But if you play sports and you happen to say, well, we live right here by Paulborough and South Orange, my mother lives on South Magnolia, my brother had to go to Como, if we would have made the decision, then Thursday morning, you wake up and you go to Nartside to register yourself with these new zone lines, then come to find out that you're not eligible. So with the help of Mr. Craig and speaking with Mr. Gazzardo with L H S A A, I had my own personal conversation with Mr. Gazzardo in trying to make sure that kids were eligible in case they did want to make the transition a year ahead of time. And I was basically getting no's the entire time, like, well, no, under that scenario, they're not eligible. Under this scenario, they're not eligible. And then under one scenario, the only scenario where they're eligible, is to make it mandatory that these kids that live in this new Nartside High School Zone, or the new Carron Crowe High School Zone, that you make it mandatory that these kids begin attending their newly-zoned high school, which would be Nartside and Carron Crowe, the two under-capacity schools. You can also leave, as it was said, the option that if a child wanted to remain at their current school, they can also remain at their current school, but seeing as that we have an administrative rule, that next year, when everything fully goes into effect, where it's mandatory for the other regular capacity or over-capacity schools, the administrative rule will go into effect. So any rising senior can choose to stay at their high school, but any freshman, sophomore, and juniors will have to go ahead and make the transition to their new school. So basically, the verbiage needed to state that it is now mandatory that any child within these new high school zones of Carron Crowe and Nartside, because they're the only two under-capacity schools, they begin attending school at Nartside or Carron Crowe. And they also have, if you, it's the day before school, you may have purchased your uniforms already, you have the option to stay at your current school, where you're already eligible, to play sports. And the focus isn't on sports, but that's the only thing that I inevitably saw that could have ended up causing a problem for a number of kids. Any volleyball player, softball player, basketball player, that made the transition, you want to make sure that that kid, because we're making the decisions, it was told to me from L H S A A, Mr. Gazzardo stated clearly, we don't mandate your home-zone school lines. We don't. You tell us what the zone lines are, and any kid that lives within that home-zone can attend school at that home-zone, and they are eligible. I made sure to ask him, hey, listen, just want to be clear, any kid that remains at Como, he said, you can't affect the kids at Como, or any kid at Acadia, or any kid at Lafayette High, you can't affect their eligibility, because they've already established their residency at that school. So they're automatically eligible. The only way to make sure that any kid doesn't miss out would be to state it the way I did. So I wanted to give an explanation to anyone, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Ms. Morris?
I'm looking at a chart, and I'm assuming that this was put on our desktop relative to this particular item. It looks like, from my quick review, that there would be about 323 kids that would be rezoned to Nartside from various schools. So assuming, I don't think this would happen, but assuming that all 323 of them decided tomorrow to go to Nartside, does Nartside have the capacity for that many additional students?
I can answer that question clearly. I wish Ms. Williams...
I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure.
We know you know the answer. Even if we doubled that number to 600, we could still take them at Nartside. Nartside is at 51% capacity. We can hold 1,300, and we're at 674 right now. So even if the number doubled. But as you stated, this is the first time that I've seen this as well, and it was interesting to look at. One thing that everyone has to keep in mind is that if a kid chooses to stay, then that kid chooses to stay. That kid is never coming. If that kid is a rising senior following this optional year, that kid will never come. And as well, these statistics are the actual student residencies. They appear as blips on a radar of a map for us. So therefore, the little girl that lives across the street, her name is Megan Zainer, she's going to attend Acadia High, she's in the business program, that kid is one of the kids that pops up for this one. And then my daughter pops up as number two. So there are a number of kids that are in schools of choice right now, Acadia Business, Como, now the Performing Arts, Visual, that they have chosen these schools of choice, and they're never going to figure into this equation. Lafayette High, gifted program, Immersion, Health Academy. So these numbers are still, these numbers are accurate for these kids, but these kids may already be attending a private school somewhere else, or they're in a school of choice. So they're not affected by this change anyway. They are to remain at their current schools.
Mr. Centeni?
I'd like to make a general comment. I'd like to thank Dr. Chassot for putting in the effort and the time to figure this out and find a way to serve his constituents, because I was of the opinion that if somebody wants to go to Nartside High School, why would we ever tell them that they can't? You know, why if we have a taxpayer-funded seat in the classroom that's empty, and the taxpayer wants to sit in that seat, give me a reason why we would say no. And he certainly found the potential snag in the equation and worked to resolve it. So thank you very much for figuring out a way to accommodate these residents who want to attend one of the schools where we'd love to have people attend. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, really quickly, Mr. Hidalgo just pulled my coat tail and asked about transportation as well. When it comes to transportation, specifically for, I wish I could give you guys the exact lines, because I have them in my head. Where a kid formally got drawn or cut off, where a kid was split between Paulborough and Edgar Martin, even though we can still see Paulborough down the street, it's now three to four neighborhoods over. So four, five, six city blocks. Whereas, I was speaking with Dr. Aguilar earlier today, as far as transportation, if one of these kids, they do choose to leave their school and go to the newly-home-zone school, that we'll see to it that there's a satellite bus stop. So until we can finally get the final tab on the numbers, as far as two weeks from now, well, 29 kids decided, or 13, or 45, and then we'll need to take a look at that. But we will inevitably end up taking care of transportation. But for the time being, a satellite bus stop until we can identify where the final numbers are of the kids that chose the optional year or not.
Ms. Morris?
I have a question regarding the staff. I know we have a capacity of 1,200, and the norm, the number's what, 500? So how does that affect the staff, the teaching staff that are assigned to that school?
Ms. Morrison, this is, obviously, this is just hours before the start of school. We're going to deal with the transportation. We will not necessarily have the bus stops in the right location. If we see 20 students transfer over to Nartside, if we see their enrollment because of this measure, we will adjust staffing immediately. So we'll work through the issues. One thing I would need some clarity on is, and by the way, these numbers were provided by Mr. Hefner. I asked him to do this today, to show the impact based on the proposed draft of the high school zoning lines. Are we thinking that students from Carron Crowe who will be zoned for Nartside would be allowed, would be required to take this option? Or are we thinking just movement from Como and Lafayette High to Nartside?
I understand what you're saying. When I look at these numbers, I think to myself, well, inevitably, these kids that is affected by Carron Crowe are now newly drawn into the new high school zone. So therefore, they'll still be required to come next year regardless. So granted, we were taking care of the overpopulated to the underpopulated, but the fact that we're looking at Carron Crowe is affected possibly as well, these kids will still be affected next year regardless. So it's kind of a catch-22 for this particular situation.
Mr. Centeni?
I think, Dr. Aguilar, I think maybe, what I'm thinking, at least the way I understand it, is that it's anything where it says to Carron Crowe or to Nartside on the right side there. I mean, if they want to go to Nartside. Does that make a difference to anybody? If they want to, I mean, if it says Nartside to Carron Crowe, does that mean, well, I mean, that's zero, but, all right.
So the motion is that it's mandatory, but you have the option of staying this year? Any other questions or comments from the board or the audience? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote. You know, Ms. Morris?
8-4, none against.
Motion carries, and that was the last item on our agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.